All right. I'm just gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Committee of the Whole. We're in City Hall, Council Chambers, 389 Spruce Street. It's Tuesday, February 25th. It's a little bit after seven o'clock and this meeting is being broadcast live via YouTube at City of Morgantown. At YouTube. Note, the Committee of the Whole meeting, meetings of the City, Morgantown City Council are intended to provide an opportunity for the council to receive information, ask questions, and identify policy options in an informal setting. No official action is taken during these meetings. At this Committee of the Whole meeting, the following matters are scheduled and we're gonna start with a presentation. On the Library Board of Directors update and Sarah Palmer. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mrs. Palmer.
We're all prepared to start.
If I stapled my packet backwards. If that's any indication about how my day's going today. Okay, all right. Well, I wanna start off with a thank you. I really appreciate the support that we get from council in so many ways. Like in troubleshooting problems that come up and meeting our funding requests and really supporting the great things that we do and also the challenges that come along. It really means a lot to us. I know that is not the case for every library in the state, in the world, whatever. So I wanna give an extra special thank you this year to you all. And a thank you to the voters in Montegalee County for approving the 2024 Library Levy, which will actually go into effect July 1 of 2025. Because combined, the Library Levy and the City of Morgantown funding is about 65% of our budget. So it's significant. Again, we're in a good position in that we have maybe a more diverse budget in some ways, funding streams than other libraries, but that's still a big chunk. Also gonna give a big shout out to the team at Morgantown Public Library. Across our whole system, they are doing some fantastic work and I'm super proud of them. Our annual staff day this year was well attended and more importantly, almost completely organized by everyone. That's not me. This was huge. This is like that coaching moment, right, where you don't have to be the one telling people what to do, that they've like got the ball and they're running with it themselves. And I'm really proud of the work that they did and how they supported each other by celebrating the projects that everyone has worked on throughout the year. We also had some help with our, from our friends at WVU in the Center for Disabilities and Excellence, who came and did a wonderful de-escalation and accessibility training for us. But some specific team highlights. Ryan Faber, our branch manager at the Cheat Library, was accepted into the American Library Association's American Leader Program this year. So he'll spend a whole year working on a project with librarians from across the country. They're particularly working on a new member roundtable, which he's gonna be able to bring that learning back to West Virginia for how we can grow our membership with the West Virginia Library Association and how to do more engagement with the rest of our team members and staff within the library system. Abby Seifert has been with the library system for a number of years, but in last year she moved into our outreach program as an experience coordinator position and she's just knocking it out of the park. She's just lights up the room when she comes in and everybody wants to get on board and do whatever crazy idea she has, which I love. And then a special shout out to two of our Clay Patel staff members, Kelly and Molly, who attended more parades than probably any political candidate this year. With the library car decorated each time, throwing out candy, waving, and being cheered on by everyone on the parade lines that it's the library ladies. So we love to see that. When, especially when our storytime people get recognized out in the community and, you know, little kids getting excited to see them. So as always, our programs are some of our highlights of the year. You know, if books are the soul of the library, then the people are definitely the heart. And the programs are where our people come together. It takes staff and attendees in order to make a successful program. They're great opportunities for both structured learning, but also play, wonder, curiosity, and of course, community building. So they, program attendance cuts across all wards across the county, socioeconomic conditions, religions, party lines, and it gives people an opportunity to create meaningful connections in an increasingly divided world. We operate programs that are from simple reading challenges. Everybody likes a prize. Our most recent winter reading challenge, we had well over 100 people and the prize is gift cards to downtown businesses. So, which we haven't announced them yet because everybody is sick. We're all taking turns being sick so we can keep the place open, but not enough to quite get the announcement out about that one. But that should happen next week. You know, of course, our usual storytimes, our craft nights for adults have just been knocking it out of the park lately. And things like Dungeons and Dragons and Anime Club for Teens and Tweens, which have been really popular, of course. Some of our system-wide highlights. Remember last year I introduced the Reading Dragons, which was just about to launch? So we are now in season two of it and we have 427 registrants. So we, we cut all those cards ourselves for the first season and in the second season, we contracted with a local printer to take on that work. And they look fantastic. They're way better than when we were doing them. But it's been really popular. We have registrants from every elementary school in the county, plus every middle school, because the program runs from K to eight, and a pretty significant homeschool population that's been participating. If you have kids who are collectors in your lives, they are absolutely ravenous for these cards. So it's a Pokemon-style reading challenge where you read a certain number of hours a week and you bring in your reading log, which you just have to mark off a block of time. And in exchange, you get dragon family cards. And then you can use it to play games in water rock paper scissors or war, where you use the different age dragons and the different colors to beat each other. We held a contest this year to design more dragons for our families. And I think we had more than 40 entries. So we're well stocked with new design ideas for season three next year. We did run it this year from October through, it'll go through April. And it was a little bit harder to get it started in October, so I think next year we will probably go back to just running it for a winter, like January through April and a little bit more condensed when there's not as much other competition going on. You might be familiar with October being in Morgantown and the wide variety of things. It's hard to get attention for, for things at that time. But it's been really successful and primarily run out of the Morgantown Library, but offered system-wide. Story Fest came into the world last year, too. This was our answer to a book fest in order to sort of get things started. We estimated we had about 800 people in the Farmers Market Pavilion over the course of the day. We are bringing it back this year, but we're gonna do it a little bit later. We're still working out the date with the city. But we hope to sort of tie it into more of a kickoff registration for summer reading, too. So to get people together for that. But we had local author and artist and creator vendors, storytimes with the lovely dinosaur there. Had a tea party. It was a T-Rex tea party.
Was that Bill in the T-Rex?
It wasn't, but it could be next year. No, but Fireman Andy joined us and did a fantastic job and served in Miss West Virginia and some other guest readers. So it was a lot of fun and we can't wait to do that one again as well. And the last of sort of our big system-wide programs is the Big Family Book Club. This is the one that we started in 2020 when we had to cancel everything else that we knew about how to run a library. And we bought a bunch of books and came up with some activities that families could do at home while they read through the book that went along with it and we mailed them out as postcards. And it's just been a hit ever since. So we regularly have between 150 and 200 families participate. This past year was a little bit, a little bit less, but the book was a little lower reading level, I think might have been, you know, we adjusted a little bit each time. And I'm pretty excited about our, our book for this summer, but I can't tell you what it is yet. I know.
Can you bring us exclusive information?
No, not this time.
She's giving us the teaser.
It's the teaser. There's puppets involved, so it's either people are either gonna be really excited or slightly scared. And we'll go.
It's a secret passion of mine is puppeting.
Is it?
No, but it could be.
It could be. There could be puppet. Yeah, so it'll be fun. We're excited about it once again. But some other highlights, of course, our adult programs have been going great. Our virtual author visits, this is a, a membership program that we have subscribed to where we get access to authors we would never be able to bring here, honestly. And they, they are live, but you can submit questions, but then they, they also keep them on the platform afterwards. You can watch them recorded. And when we reviewed it this year to decide if we were gonna continue the contract, because we, the contract renews every year. And I was like, is anybody, like, I haven't been hearing much about it lately, so I wasn't sure. And when we looked into the stats, they're still just getting huge amount of usage. Like, you know, some of them have been viewed, you know, more than 100 times within the first two or three months. So there's an appetite there for it that we don't necessarily see in a live, leave the house, put on real clothes kind of a way. So we're glad to be able to offer that. But at the same time, our attendance for our in-person adult programming is also picking up. The last picture there is of our, we had a murder mystery night at the, and I think we just repeated this, that was a, it was a Dracula one, I think. So there's, there's been a lot of interest in, in trying some new things. Teens and tweens as well. Beyond the Book is our answer to a tween and teen book club. They don't wanna read the exact same book as everybody else when everybody else wants to read it. Not a surprise, right? Have you? If you've met a tween or a teen. But they love coming to a like thematic book club. So we'll do one that's all Magic School books or, you know, myth-related books or dystopian fiction. And so do some activities and crafts that go along with that and then they get to share with each other what are their favorite books in that genre. So I'm personally a big fan of whenever we can put the kids in charge and let them be the ones to tell us. I mean, we can't tell them what's cool, right? I don't know about you, but I have a teen and a tween, so I'm about as uncool as you get. And, but if you let them tell you what they like, it's a whole other conversation. So that's been a lot of fun. We've run a couple after-hours events, too, this year. Like Friday evenings after we close. We had an all-ages Swifty Party, where we celebrated, you know, friendship bracelets and poetry and music and storytelling and dancing and snacks, of course. Plus some Minecraft classes have been going on, too. Minecraft is just here forever at this point. And of course, kids, this is where everybody always starts, right? This is what they think we do more than anything else. And we're very grateful for our community partners that come in and do lots of different children's program with us. We had a wonderful opportunity this year to host Jan Brett, who is a New York Times bestselling picture book author and illustrator. We knew the audience was gonna be well beyond our capacity to host in the Morgantown Library. So we partnered with South Middle School to use their auditorium for it and it was wonderful. She was lovely. She did a demonstration of how she does an illustration while talking about her writing process and then was incredibly patient while she signed everybody's books. And we even had Hedgie, the hedgehog from The Hat and the Mitten, was there in a big costume. So it was lots of fun. So we definitely stay busy with the kids' programs. You know, I can't not talk about our statistics. We are required to report statistics annually to the state of West Virginia and then they report them to Institute of Museum Library Services. It's a wonderful, massive data set where we can compare ourselves to other libraries of similar funding, similar size, similar communities, in order to really create benchmarks about what we are doing. And so our statistical year goes from, like our fiscal year, July 1. So these are all fiscal year '24 numbers. Items borrowed, that's our, our physical things that were checked out from the library. These numbers are system-wide numbers, so it's all, all locations. It is down a little bit. The, the shift to digital is just significant and, and like the gap is, is widening. Our children's circulation hasn't changed that much, though, so people are still coming in for, for children's material. It's more the adult fiction change that we see. But you can see our digital borrows, which now have outpaced our physical borrows. Those have increased and continue to increase drastically from year to year. I always like to look at the new card number. So I put the last two years, so three years total up there. That's, so fiscal year '24 was back up to, that's like a pre-COVID number, which is great to see. That means people are walking in the door. They're coming to see what we're doing. They're coming to programs. But our, our online card registration for people who live in Mon County and just want digital materials has also drastically increased. Our people, total visits, this is really honestly our most unreliable statistics number. It's very difficult. We have a people counter and so we've had the, but they tend to break really easily. And when you move from one system to a new system, it never counts the same way. And so when you look at this number over the years, it goes a little crazy. But it's pretty consistent with what it was last year, so, which probably means it's gonna break sometime this year. But I, I mean, I feel, I'd like to see more people walk in the door. We're doing what we can to do that. You know, we've got some, some ideas for this year for how to maybe improve on that front. But total program numbers was up. When we have successful programs, they build on themselves because people are like, have you thought about this? And we get a lot more stuff going on. So we had 650 programs last year with more than 11,000 attendees throughout the year. More than 17,000 reference questions were answered and there were 10,000 uses of our public computers. So this doesn't include laptops when people just walk in with their own device and, and use our space. This is just when people come in and use the actual computers. And we have actually cut down the number of computers that we had available over the last two years. Not by a lot, by like two, just because we've, we got some new furniture that's a little bit more comfortable. But the, the usage dropped off for a lot of years, but it's held pretty steady the last couple. And we tend to add about 10,000 items a year, so we were pretty close to that. We didn't withdraw quite as many over the past year. The withdrawals are necessary. And it's always like this taboo thing no one wants to talk about, but I'll talk about it because space exists. And if our shelves are jam-packed with books, people don't wanna take books off the shelves because they're not inviting, they're not, you can't see what's on them, they're crowded. It's like, how tall our shelves are in the building, it gets really dark then in the rows and it's harder to see. We have to take the books off that aren't circulating in order to put new books on the shelf. We can't, we can't exist in a state where we only bring in new books and never get rid of anything. It's a, it's a hard thing for people to swallow sometimes, but it's just the reality of space. So what's next? Communication. I'm really, really excited about this. We've been working on this project for a few months. We have a new email system going in where we will be able to pull, we will actually be able to combine our siloed information. So our digital users and our people who check things out from the library users, how they interact with things doesn't mesh. We don't, there's no crossover, there's no bridge. So we have a couple of different things working to sort of pull that information together. So we can email, we'll be able to email our digital users more easily to remind them of things that aren't being used or if they haven't checked anything out for a few months, be like, Kay, we miss you. Come on back. And we'll be able to segment those emails, so you're not getting a lot of junk, like you're getting things that matter to you. And then really be able to target and automate a lot of our marketing to make it more impactful. So for all those new card people, if they come in and they get a card and they haven't used it after three months, they'll get a little reminder that's like, hey, we miss you, or you know, something along those lines. But this will integrate with the ILS system, our circulation system. So it'll make it a lot easier and we're pretty excited about it. We'll also be able to brand things a little bit better because once people leave our world and go to things like Libby and Hoopla, they lose the branding that it's associated with the library. And nothing hurts me more than hearing people be like, oh yeah, well, I just use Libby. And I'm like, that's the library. And they're like, well, no, it's on my app, so Libby. I'm like, yeah, we bought that. So, yeah, so this will help with some of that. And we're excited to learn more about how, how people are interacting with those things too, which will help us make decisions about keeping digital library assets. And of course, the facilities study, we are, this is something we've been working towards for a long time. We put out an RFP at the end of the summer, looking for somebody to do a review and evaluation of all six of our facilities to create a, a financial feasibility study. Can we continue to run six facilities on the budget that we have? Or how could we run, what kind of budget would we need in order to run those facilities to meet the vision of the community that it serves? And then to create, they will also be creating a maintenance plan and, or a replacement plan for buildings. We have a number of branch locations that are in desperate need of replacement. This document at the end will help us approach other funding agencies to help replace those branch libraries in the county to bring them up to modern library standards. So they will be here, we've been working with them remotely. They will be here to do the first round of onsite visits in March. And the full, the end deliverable should be end of July, early August. Digital literacy, state-level grants, they just keep moving the goal line on those, but now they're saying spring. I'm just going to keep leaving it up there. It's still coming. Let's think. And we have formalized our review process of our digital assets for our digital library. As you have heard me discuss before, the cost for those just in, continuing to increase on both the vendor side, but then also because our usage has gone up so high, which we love and don't want to discourage, but we may need to prioritize where we spend some of that money. So we now have a formal committee, and we're working on creating a matrix to, to better evaluate this and to make sure we're making the best use of the valuable funding that we have. So Hoopla, right? We will be making some changes to Hoopla at the end of this month, March, let's start. They can't actually do it on March 1st. It has to happen at the end of the day on February 28th. So a couple of things, one, we're just going to limit the number of notifications that we send out to users, reminding them to use it. Like you get a, I mean, I get a text at the end of the month that's like, you haven't used all your borrows. I'm like, I haven't, and I start searching. So that's one simple thing that we can do. I know, I know when I was here last year, we talked a lot about, we looked at like Octobers and how it had changed over four years, and I think we were up to 4,000. Something was sort of our new number last October. Well, no, it did snow a lot in January, but, and we had record-high usage in a number of areas in January. But in January, we went over $6,000. Yeah. So we want to preserve the six borrows a month. We do not want to put budget caps on that limit the number of people who have access to it. This would be like, if we said we were only going to spend $4,000 a month on it, and if we hit that on the 10th day of the month, then if you didn't use your six borrows yet, you don't get them. We're trying to avoid doing those two things. So as a pilot, we're going to start by limiting access to anything on the platform that's $299 and above. So you just won't see it. It'll disappear from the platform. If you already have it checked out, you get to finish. But if you, so this would go for audiobooks, ebooks, comics, TV, music, movies. It wouldn't affect the Binge Pass thing, so you can still check out the Magazine Binge Pass or the Hallmark Binge Pass and watch a week worth of Hallmark movies or mysteries free with your library card if you want. So it's, it's a trial. We're going to see what it does. We're going to give it a couple of months, you know, three or four months and see if it brings it under control enough that we can readjust to it. We kind of went for the approach that would make people the least mad. And we'll see where it goes from there. So that, oh, I'm going backwards in my hand again. That's why I don't read manga. I cannot read backwards. I know that there's a lot on your overall agenda this evening, but of course, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Not even, it's not even a question. I don't know if I talked to you about this. So I went to Iceland a few months ago, and I was in their library. And if I've spoken to you about this, please stop me. In their library, they had board games and little buckets where you could check out themed parties for like little kids.
Yeah.
So you could get like a little cake, butter and stuff like that, and then obviously bring it back. Is that something that as a library, we would be able to do to get people in the door?
So we have board games at three locations, including downtown. We also have, I hadn't heard of the theme birthday party ones. That's fun. I've heard of cake pans before, which honestly terrifies me a little bit.
What is it?
Cake pans, but no, I know. We actually had a survey out in, for all of January, I think it started in December, like, tell us what you would want in the library of things. Looking to expand it, like the Clay Patel Branch has video games that they lend out. Cheat lends out Storytime bins, so each one is a different theme. You could do your own Storytime at home. And we have birding backpacks that have two pairs of binoculars and guidebooks in them. So we've been experimenting with it. The, the survey results were, there were a lot of great comments in there that we've been sort of sorting through, but the overall big picture of the survey was exactly what we expected. Everybody wants everything in all the places.
Naturally.
Yes. So we're like, well, that wasn't super helpful in that regard. But it did give us a couple of areas to focus on, like craft type kits, like people that wanted to try something, a, a new hobby before you invest in it. Tools, of course, were really popular.
So the reason I brought it up is it's not listed on our website. And so I wasn't, I'm not sure if the public realizes that.
Also not on my coming soon is a redesign of the website. But yet, our current website is very, there's a lot of it that's locked down to us from the way it was designed. It doesn't meet the accessibility standards that, that we would like to achieve. And it's very difficult for us to update. So we are, our marketing and communications manager is currently working with a WVU student to sort of write the plan of what we want for our website. Saying, we're on a similar timeline. We expect to have it launched probably in the fall by the time we get through, we get a little interrupted by summer reading, end of fiscal year things, and then, so we hope to have it moving along by fall.
Which I do, I, I love your reading dragons.
Yeah.
And, because it reminds me of my days of getting a scalding hot pizza from the Pizza Hut in the summer when they cast iron.
Yes.
So you read a book and then you get to burn your fingers for the sake of delicious cheese pizza.
Absolutely.
Can students still sign up for your reading dragons?
Yeah, so it goes, it's, we do a rolling registration for it, which is why, one of the reasons that factored in with shortening the time period because it's really hard to market something for that many months and have people continue to pay attention to it. And so, yes, they can keep signing up for it. You can't read forward, but you can always read backwards. So you can sign up late and you can make up all those times and collect the cards. We just, because we want them to keep coming back, they can't read forward on it. So it's, there's a, each line is, is a week through the end of April, I think.
Thank you so much. You do such a great job. I just appreciate it that you do.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate your enthusiasms. Thank you.
Thanks.
Reading dragons is better. You don't burn your fingers.
We get pizza for the adults sometimes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, now, hold on.
I got to see the adult program where you get to be an author also. That was cool. All right, now we move on to court-appointed special advocates, CASA for Kids. Caleb Hatch, volunteer supervisor.
Good evening.
Appreciate it.
Certainly. Thank you all for having me over tonight to speak about this. The goal of tonight's talking, I apologize that I don't have my nice little presentation up. I had some technical errors.
It's been a long day.
But you did provide us with these mighty
Did provide you with those. And I will also send out a couple of other materials afterwards because I have some breaking CASA news for you all. That's going to be great. But the goal of tonight is to begin to more inform both the public and members of our government body what CASA is, what we do, and how we're impacting the community. So for those who don't know, CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. These individuals are highly-trained community volunteers, so these are members of our community who will become the eyes and ears of the court in cases of abuse and neglect to speak on behalf of abused and neglected children. Our CASA program serves three counties. We serve here in Mon County, we serve up in Preston County, and last year we took on Tucker County as well. So across these three counties, we have 22 active volunteers with more in training currently. And our volunteers have been able to advocate for directly 187 children within the court system in these three counties in 2024, which sounds like an incredible number. And we monitored an additional 100 children as well with our staff members. But the honest truth is that across these three counties, 700 children entered the foster care system. And that means that there were over 500 children we were unable to serve in 2024. And we're hoping, moving forward into 2025, and in the expansions that I will detail in a moment here, that we will be able to reach more of these children. And so it's now more important that people become aware of who we are, what we do, and that we're able to recruit and train more of our community volunteers. So like I said, CASAs serve as the eyes and ears of the court beyond the court system. Unfortunately, the system is highly overburdened. An individual caseworker could have upwards of 100 children on their caseload. Our guardian ad litem, who also represent the best needs of the children, can also have extremely high numbers of children that they serve. Our CASA volunteers have a single child or sibling group that they serve, with the exception of a few of our rock star CASAs, who have, one of them has three families that she is serving currently, which is absolutely incredible. But because our CASAs have such a limited number of children that they serve, they are able to dedicate more time and energy than anybody else who's involved in the case and can therefore advocate for the best needs of the children more thoroughly. And that has led to direct and positive impacts on the children that we serve. For example, one of our volunteers who spent more time with her CASA child than most of the people involved in the case, simply because of our reach, was able to advocate effectively to have that child assessed for autism and then be given accommodations to help him grow and be able to function better within his foster home and throughout his case. So our volunteers are highly effective at having our suggestions actually accepted by the judges within this, within the cases. So we make recommendations, we monitor progress, we attend all of the meetings that anybody involved in the case would be. We're interacting with everybody who's involved in these children's lives. And it provides a lot for the kids in our communities that are in the system. This person ends up being the most stable person in their life. You can change caseworkers several times over, you can change guardian ad litem several times over throughout your time in the system. Your CASA caseworker will be there for the duration of your time in the system. So it is the person that these children can go to who is going to be solid in their life. And who brings up not only their best, the needs of the child, but also will advocate for what the child wants in these cases as well. And this can range from, we would like to return to our parents eventually if it's safe, you know? To things that are silly, my supervisor, Phil C. L., executive director, likes to joke, if a kid tells you that they want a unicorn and that's what their desire is to be added to the court report, add that they would like a unicorn to the court report. We love our kids. It's incredible. But our ultimate goal and what we always strive towards is finding a safe and permanent home for these abused and neglected children. And our really ultimate goal is, when it is safe to do so, reunifying families. And with that, I'd like to talk about the service expansion that I mentioned as I came up. We are actually opening the second indoor visitation space in all of Mon County. The Youth Services Center is currently the only visitation space for parents who are going through the court system to have monitored visitation of their children. CASA recently got a grant from the Mon County Commission, and we will be opening our visitation space in March. And that is one of the things that I will send out, is a flyer for the ribbon-cutting ceremony. We would love to have anybody here, both from the city council and in attendance, come and support us as we open that space. I have spent the last two days straight putting together furniture for that space. And I would definitely love to see everybody come out and see the effort that
When is it?
So that will be on March 12th at noon. The other thing that we're doing and that I am most excited for, because I'm going to toot my own horn for a moment here, is we are starting a new program. And it is, thanks to the public defenders offices that we are able to do this, it is called Eternally Home. And Eternally Home was a program that was piloted by the Mineral County CASA, and it seeks to prevent children from entering the foster care system in the first place. So I'm going to be front-running this program. And our goal is to provide things like case management, physical needs, educational opportunities and other opportunities for at-risk family and youth to prevent them from entering the system. So we are very excited that coming soon, we will also be able to announce the opening of that center as well. So as I said, we do have that visitation room ribbon-cutting coming up. The other thing that we have coming up that I also did send out in the packet was we have our third annual fundraiser, fundraising gala. This year is a James Bond theme, so we are literally rolling out the red carpet. We've got some classic cars that are showing up. It's going to be wonderful. There will be a mission to complete on the evening of in the theme of James Bond. So it is going to be a very fantastic night, and we would love to see you all there as well. And I would be happy to take any questions at this point.
This James Bond event?
Yes.
Do we come in costume?
So we do have a style guide posted to our Facebook page. Lots of blacks, reds, golds is kind of the theme, and very much spy attire.
It sounds like the answer is yes.
But they would never know who we are. That's the problem, if we're dressed as spies. But they would never know who we are. That's the problem, if we're dressed as spies.
Yeah. This is nice. They have nice promotional materials in the correct colors that they're hoping that you'll wear.
Our, our social media person Chrissy, she, we have two Chrissys. Our social media person Chrissy does a fantastic job with the designs for our items, so.
And there's sponsorship opportunities.
There are sponsorship opportunities.
And opportunities to donate.
Yes, there are. And, you know, we would be more than happy for anybody to get involved in those ways as well. We have a lot of fantastic sponsors this year, City of Granville, some of the local businesses. There's gonna be a silent auction at the gala, and we have some really fantastic auction items as well. There's a golf trip down in Cannon Valley. We have a pair of puppets. I, there was talk of puppets earlier. We have a pair of puppets at the Appalachian Gallery.
It's like the costume of your hand. That's what the puppet is.
But it's, it's gonna be just a fantastic night.
What if it has strings?
I don't know. It's actually like Sesame, or well, Sesame Street style hand puppet.
I did my research. Costume of your hand.
All right.
Well, thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Appreciate you taking the time. All right. We are moving down our agenda, and now we are to item C, the 2024 Urban Deer Hunt Update.
Good evening. Grabbing again tonight. I'm happy to report that the 2024 season, which was our program's fourteenth, was another safe and successful season. In terms of statistics, we harvested a hundred forty-three deer, a hundred and eleven antlerless deer, thirty-two antlered bucks. Forty-three of those were donated to our meat donation program, yielding thirteen hundred fifty-three pounds of ground venison. That brings our fourteen-year totals to one thousand four hundred and fourteen deer harvested and fourteen thousand five hundred and thirty-seven pounds of ground venison. We broke the seven-ton mark, which we're very proud of. If you've heard me speak before, you've heard me say that our men and women are also served as the eyes and ears for the property managers and property owners in which they, they hunt on. This year, notable, our hunters assisted the Montgalee County deputies with some trespassers on some county property that borders a west-run property that we have access to. They helped WVU police with four-wheeler, folks driving four-wheelers on a WVU property illegally, as well as a gentleman hunting with a rifle on one of the WVU farms. This individual also stole some of our hunters' property, so that's still being investigated. And probably the, the most, the one closest to me, because I'm a Norwood resident, we were able to work with the City of Morgantown's Police Department, and they were able to cite a gentleman for hunting with a rifle in the city illegally. That case is still pending, so I don't have any additional information about that. But, you know, as always, we thank city council for their support. We'll start, we'll, bless you. We started viewing applications in May, and we'll, we'll have our safety class for new hunters in July and get started in September. Any questions?
Appreciate the service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is it a coincidence that you harvested fourteen hundred and fourteen deer on your fourteenth anniversary?
It wasn't planned.
Seems like, oh, there's no more.
Lot of, lot of fourteens, yes.
And they broke fourteen thousand pounds of donated meat.
And I'm sorry to say, we don't have any themed events or anything, but we could.
We can continue.
Yeah, you have to wear camouflage. That's, that's correct. But, you know, some of our challenges, I'd be willing to work, I've come to talk to any, speaking of any ward meetings. You know, our challenge is being able to accommodate hunters with a shrinking of properties with development in town and still address the many issues that we have around the city.
We've been happy to accommodate using bohart property with minimal concern from community members, I would say. But we've gotten a lot of positive feedback also, so, and I know your guys are, some of, and women, are an extra set of eyes and ears out there for us and have reported different things, so we appreciate your, your help.
Since we don't have natural predators, and since we have a lot of deer, and since they keep multiplying, deer services are pretty much always needed and make a big difference when we have tree plantings, say in Creps Park. And now that you're there, again, hunting, it makes a big difference in just trees being to the ground. So we love our deer, but just not quite so many.
Not so many, exactly.
Rick, are there any areas that you would like to place hunters that you don't have access to that you might be able to help with? Yeah, are there areas that are higher concentration?
Suncrest is a, is a pretty tough area to crack. There's just enough wooded space for them to do really well. There are some pretty nice-sized parcels to get into, but we just haven't been able to get into them. Creps, and then one, one behind the preate building, are the only two we have in Suncrest right now. But again, I'd be glad to come to a ward meeting and speak. You know, I think people are more face-to-face and have a conversation and look at some of our statistics, might be willing to, to talk, so.
Do you use Whitmore Park at all?
We don't hunt on Whitmore, but we have hunters on properties pretty close to Whitmore. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Now we have the Civilian Police Review Advisory Board, 2024 Annual Report Update.
Good evening.
Thank you.
It's good to see everyone. It's been quite a while.
Chair and board members.
Yes. My name is Rich Barx, and I chair the Morgantown Civilian Police Review and Advisory Board. We currently have seven members. We need nine. And that is, that is one of the things I'm gonna talk to you tonight about. But first, I'd like to tell you about our accomplishments for 2024 and our plans for 2025. Everybody is seeing the annual report, I hope, so I'm not going to go through detail. Just gonna give you a high-level summary on this. Okay, in 2024, we held eleven regular meetings, three special meetings, one public forum, and one internal meeting. And what we do with these meetings, we meet every Thursday, every second Thursday of every month at twelve o'clock, and we meet at the public library. And it's, the meeting is conducted in a hybrid format, in person and also on Zoom. And currently, we have three active committees. One is the Training Committee, Community Outreach Committee, and the Statistical Data and Reporting Committee, which I'll get to a little bit later on because we have some problems there. Okay, major activities for 2024. We hosted a public forum to educate the public about the board on February the sixth, 2024, at the Morgantown Public Library. Forty-five people attended and gave individuals an opportunity to ask questions about policing and also what our responsibilities were as a, as a board. We conducted a case study review with Morgantown Police Department, and that consisted of a special meeting we held on February the twenty-fourth, I'm sorry, twenty-ninth. And that basically what we did, we took a look at an arrest incident at Sheets. And we had the Chief of Police go through the body cam, and we could, we asked questions about, you know, what was going on, why, what's the procedure? Because, you know, really what we're looking for, we're looking for positive outcomes. And because in this particular situation, I like to go for this very briefly because it, I still remember it vividly because it was concerning. We had a young lady that had been trespassed at, at Sheets. And she was kind of belligerent. And the thing that I, that I was, I was impressed by one thing, and then the outcome wasn't, wasn't really so good. But I was impressed that it was an officer on site that was, he was doing everything in his power not to arrest this young lady. But she, she was adamant about going to enter this place to get a hot dog. That's what she kept saying, she kept saying. And I'm thinking, well, just buy her a hot dog. I mean, if that's really what she wanted. But I think what we found out later on, as we went through the whole situation, there was a little bit more involved than, than just that. She actually didn't want the hot dog until she was told to leave. So it's kinda, you know, puts things in a different perspective. But the concerning thing was the number of officers that showed up on scene. You're talking about a trespass situation, one individual, probably weighed a hundred and fifteen pounds, and seven police officers arrived. And I was kinda thinking, that's, isn't that every officer on shift? I mean, what, why, why? And we asked the, we asked the chief that question, and his response was, a lot of times it's training. You know, and it's also a situation where they're always talking about having each other's back type situation. But the more police you have involved in a situation like that, which was a, a nonviolent incident, it can escalate the situation. If you get that many police officers on, on site and you have more than one person giving commands, that's a problem. And we talked, we talked about that, and I, I think that he understood where we were coming from. Because there were some other things we had talked to the deputy chief about previously. You know, when you, you know, what, the one thing we, we did find also is that they really don't have a handbook on how to do their job. Which, you know, this isn't part of this, but since I'm here with this review, I just wanted to, to kind of address this. You know, we talked about, you know, how does an officer know how to do a traffic stop? How do, how do they know to, how to respond to a domestic dispute? You know, I, I was surprised when we were told there wasn't such a thing as a handbook. And so basically, it tells me that you're trained at the academy, but your on-the-job training is here. So if you do not have a resource, how do you, how does everybody know how to do their job? How do you consistently do the same thing? It ought to be step-by-step. You know, if you're doing a traffic stop, here's what you do. You know? And I was just kinda, I was surprised by that because you're only, you know, you're talking about minimal training before you get out there, you know, out in the street. So I just wanted to point that out. Another thing we did, we engaged, we had annual training for the board, in which was conducted by Dr. Jim Nolan, Police Lieutenant and Expert in Police Reform and Community-Oriented Policing. And what we were trying to do there is understand the different policing models. Because when you start talking about community policing, there's, there's a lot of different models out there. And so we wanted to see how each one of them worked, the pluses and the minuses, you know, whether pros and the cons. A lot of it had to do with manpower and budgetary constraints. And one of the most important things we did, in my opinion, was we developed and launched a three-phase plan for surveying the community on perceptions of public safety and policing in Morgantown. So we've already started that, that particular thing, and it's, what it is, it's, it's to gather public perceptions of policing and public safety. Board member, Dr. Megan Gandy, and Dr. Jim Nolan are co-leading the project with resource support from WVU School of Social Work. What we've done so far is that it's a three-phase. First phase was to conduct focus groups and individual interviews. And what, what we did with that was to identify relevant and timely questions for a broader survey. We're at the point right now where the next phase of this particular study is mailing. We're gonna mail out seven thousand surveys, hoping to get seven hundred back. That's about, I guess, the normal standard for surveys, is one percent response. So we're, so that's the, that's the next thing we're doing. And we've made a budgetary request of eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and ten cent to, to accomplish that goal. And, you know, we think this is a, this is a very important piece. You know, we, we need to know what the community thinks about safety. Do you feel safe? What are the, what are your concerns? And, you know, based on the focus groups, we, we came up with a list of questions, and they're just been kinda like more detailed as we, as we go along with this thing. We think that what we wanna do is see what the correlation is between survey results and the data, statistical data. You know, you know, there's some people that think this is a very violent town, but I think the statistics will show you that it's really not that violent. And so we wanna be able to, you know, communicate to the public, hey, look, here's, here's how, here's the town that you live in. Here's really what it is. It's not about the sensational pieces you may see in the newspaper or on the news. I mean, you know, that, that's not indicative of what happens in this town on, you know, on a regular basis. And we, we think that will, I think, you know, we're look, we're looking at, at using this to really, I guess, expand on community policing. Because community policing really is, it's, it's the police and the community working together to solve problems. If you have distrust in the police, you're not going, you're not gonna cooperate. You're not gonna have people calling in with issues. They see something. They're just gonna mind their own business. Because some people won't talk to the police. Maybe they've had a bad experience with the police or whatever. They, they just don't trust them. They have, there's a lot of work to do to build trust. We've also established protocols for receiving and responding to citizen emails with the board. What we've done, we've designated a board member to check emails on a weekly basis. And if there's anything that comes up that requires a discussion and a meeting, he brings that up. Some of it can just be, he can handle it on his own. We attended neighborhood association meetings to promote understanding of the board's purpose and scope and facilitate buy-in for the community survey. One of the things we also did, we revised the civilian complaint form. What we wanted to do with the form was to, to make it easier for people to fill out and also to submit. At this point, the only way to submit a complaint is in a written form that you take to the police department. And best practice tells you that that's not the best way to do it. You know, going, going to the police department to file a complaint can be pretty intimidating to some people. It's like, I guess, a, a good analogy would be, say two boys get in a fight on a playground. All right? One boy beats up the other boy. The boy that gets beat up, gets beat up, goes and tells his older, the other kid's older brother that, your brother beat me up. You know, so it's, it's like, and to me, that's a good analogy because that's, nothing's gonna happen here because that's his big brother. That's, that's, that's their family. So we're looking at a, a process in which someone, people can submit the form electronically. We discussed this with, with Chief of Police, and we've come up with a way, what we did, we, we made a revision, we submitted the revision, we got feedback. So we're gonna encompass his feedback into the next revision and see what we stand. Because I think it's important, in my opinion, this is, this is part of the feedback process. And it's, again, it's just not about complaints either. We're gonna have a separate form for accommodations. So if a civilian sees somebody, sees a police officer that's doing something that they feel that, that needs to be noted, that will also be taken into consideration. But it's like, it's like any service industry. You can't, you can't say you're, you're doing a good job, you know, basically. Basically, you're telling us, you're doing the job, and you're saying you're doing a good job. Your customer's the one determines whether you're doing a good job, and the customer is the citizen. So that's, that's very important feedback. We also reviewed the body camera policy. And we're going to. And, uh, we're going to, uh, we're probably, we're gonna continue to do that. Um, cause we took a look at races of concerns and, um, you know, we're going to take a, a closer look to see what, what's possible. Um, because there was a, a resolution that was passed, um, by the Human Rights Commission, which, uh, stated that, um, police officers' body cams should be on with every interaction with the citizen. All right? So we wanna, we wanna try to take that piece of it and at least input it in the policy. Uh, cause it's kind of a gray area, but we just, the one thing, we, we don't know what the technology restrictions are. You know, we don't, we don't know, um, for instance, the body cameras that they, that they use, how much can it hold on it? Can it hold a whole shift? You know, I mean, at what point do they turn it on? Um, cause we, you know, we know that there's, um, from the time that they turn it on until it starts, there's, there's a delay in the audio of about thirty seconds. So we just trying to figure out some things there. And also we know that, um, uh, I guess the new, the new police cruisers don't have cameras, they don't have dash cams. And we, we wondered about that because it, it seemed like they did at one point, but I, as they bring it in new cars, they don't, they don't have, they don't have dash cams. Um, and this is, this is, in my opinion, this, this is a, a piece of technology that, that protects both the police and the civilian. Um, so I, I don't see why that wouldn't be something that we would undertake. That way you kinda, it's there, you see what happened. You hear what happened. It's not a question, well, he said this, she said that, you know, and we, we all know, we all know how that works out when you get into a, a courtroom situation. The police officer is always gonna have more credibility. Um, some of the major challenges that we had in, uh, twenty twenty-four was actually getting statistical data. Um, we held a meeting in twenty twenty-three with the then deputy chief, um, in which we, we gave him some data points we wanted to look at for, for, uh, to, to generate some reports. Um, and, you know, they took the data points, uh, you know, and it, and they made it sound like it wasn't gonna be a, you know, that difficult a thing to do. But then we didn't get anything or hear anything for, for quite a while. And then there was a change. And I think part of, part of it was the fact that there was a change in regime. Uh, you got a new deputy chief who took over that and it's like, I think, kind of, things kinda got lost in the sauce a little bit with that. But we've held a meeting with him, um, this month. I missed the meeting, but we held a meeting this month and just, we went over the same information. But what we're finding is what we thought was gonna be easy to get now seems like it's gonna be very difficult to get. And we're trying to figure that out. Um, because it's a database for one. If it's a database, why can't you get the information out of a database? I mean, it's, you know, maybe just need somebody who's a little bit, knows a little bit more about the technology in order to, you know, to generate the reports. Because initially, we did get samples of, uh, some of the information that was in the database and it's pretty extensive. Uh, and I think it, I think it would, it could help a lot in, in more than one respect. I mean, if you know, if you know that, say eighty percent of your, your assaults take place at between two and three o'clock in the morning or between two and four o'clock in the morning on a high street on a, you know, it, it would help you with your resource planning. Um, because I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm one of these people, I'm always wondering when I see, you know, police, um, I, I'm wondering, you know, how do you, how do you determine how they patrol? When do they patrol? I mean, you know, I don't know, you know, I'm just, I'm just wondering, I see somebody sitting in a, a private parking lot looking for speeders on a thirty-five mile an hour road. I'm thinking, okay, that's, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out, you know, what does that really have to do with public safety? Um, so it's, that's just my, that's my thought, that's my personal thought. That's not, I don't, I don't think that's a thought of my committee or whatever, but just, just my thought. And also, um, along with the, you know, talking about the Morgantown Police Department, we've had good discussions with, with the Chief of Police. Um, we've also had good discussions with the, um, Deputy Chief of Police, but we haven't had enough. Uh, so we, what we've done is that we're, we've scheduled quarterly meetings with, uh, the Chief of Police. And the first one we're having is, um, March the eighteenth. So we're hoping to iron some things out there as far as, um, uh, how, how often we're gonna communicate? We're gonna communicate at least quarterly, but I, I think it's gonna be more than that when we start getting to these special committees. Uh, because we're gonna need more, we're gonna need information. Um, and our primary concern right now as far as the information has to do with the data, the statistical data. That's, that's very, very important. We saw reports, if you look at on the site now, the reports are generated in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Um, it's a lot of information, a lot of demographic information. Um, but now they can't produce those reports. Um, so it sounds like there was a lot of, um, I don't know, it sounds like they maneuvered a lot of information in order, I mean, it just, a lot of hand, they did a lot of stuff by hand that I just, again, the database, I can't figure out why you have to manipulate it as much as they're doing it instead of writing a program to do it. Or maybe we just need to get somebody in here who's, you know, IT person to do it. Uh, so, you know, we're hoping to do that. Um, and one of the most important things, our biggest concern has to do with the vacancy on the board. Um, I'm coming up on the end of my third year already and I, I was surprised, it went by pretty quick. But, um, we started with five and we're supposed to have nine. We did get two more and we had seven. But we've been stuck with seven since early twenty twenty-three. And we're trying to figure out how, what is it that we can do and how can we go about getting this board filled? Um, I mean, what, 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 what can we? Uh, we've, we've recommended people, we've had people interviewed. Uh, and, you know, still, still nothing. It's like, like some of the other boards, you, you can't man. And, you know, we initially, I don't know, I think it's been, initially, I'm gonna say when it first started, before we started, I think we interviewed maybe twenty, almost twenty-four people, I think is what it was. Um, and the way that, the way that the ordinance is set up, there are certain positions that should be filled, uh, based on nominations from certain groups. All right? And there's others that you all do as, like, at large. Um, so we're gonna take it, we're gonna take a look and see, you know, who's, who's left. If there, you know, is there actually anybody left that, that we can actually come in to interview for these jobs? Cause they don't, I guess, some of the people we've talked to, they don't, they don't know, they don't, I don't know whether they were contacted as to whether they didn't, you know, that they weren't picked. I, I'm not sure how that works. But it's like, you know, they're wondering, you know, we don't, you know, what are you looking for? I mean, we're, we're looking for people to do work. Because we need, you know, we got a lot of work to do and we need more people so we can, we can actually fill the, the subcommittees that we have that we can get things going. Cause it seems like we've been doing, it's a slow process anyhow because of, uh, how you have to meet, how, you know, it's like, it's, they're all, all public meetings. Whereas some, there's times that there's things that we, maybe two people need to go do. You know, but it's almost all, you know, so it's all public. Um, and, and a lot of it's just, it's grunt work, we're grinding. That's how I look at it, we're grinding. And, uh, we, you know, we want, we want people that wanna work. Cause it's, it, it's gonna take work. Uh, we've got work to do. Um, we're gonna start taking like the body cam as one policy and procedure we're taking a look at, but that won't be the only one. Because we wanna make sure that if you have a policy and procedure in place, um, is it followed, is it followed? And it, does it actually accomplish the goal? What is the purpose of that particular policy and procedure? Uh, so, you know, we wanna make sure that, that things are being, you know, you have policies and procedures in place that actually, uh, help the public. I mean, we have to, I, I think we need to remember that we call them police officers, but they're, they're really public safety officers. Uh, they're not just law enforcement officers. So I, I think that, um, as we're moving forward, I think you're gonna see, um, a lot more activity from us. Um, so, you know, I, I thank you and, uh, does anybody have any questions?
I do. I'd like to address your comment just now about speeding, why an officer would be parked in a parking lot.
Yes.
Did you ever think that maybe the community caught him?
No.
And said there might be some speeder or?
It's a, it's a business po, parking lot.
Excuse me?
I, I, I know what, what I'm talking about. It's a, um, you know where Richwood Avenue is?
Yes.
You know where the bottom of Richwood Avenue is from Hillcrest? You know, that's a little slide that, right down there? There's a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, all right? Uh, you, you can barely coast thirty-five mile an hours. But my point is, is that I live in that area. Uh, you don't have people driving fifty-five miles an hour up and down that road. So my question is, you know, why are you sitting there?
Maybe he's looking for something, maybe he's waiting on something, who knows?
I do get concerns about speeding on Richwood all the time that runs through my ward, I get.
Lower, I'm talking about the lower end, where I'm talking about.
I understand where you're talking about and maybe that's just the place that an officer has to sit. But I, I just wanted to say, I do get concerns about speeding on Richwood, very, very frequently.
So maybe you, you know, that's an issue. I'd like to ask you, can you give me a reason why your original annual report that you submitted to the city clerk office and why it was rescinded the first?
Yes, we revised that report because we felt, we felt that it was not proper to name individuals within an annual report. It's, you know, I worked, I worked in a corporate office, you don't, you don't never see, never see that. It's not a question, it's a question of, it's a question of the whole department, it's not a question of one individual.
That's appreciated.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, I have concerns that this commission's not, not doing the mission that I think it was intended to do.
And what do you think that is?
And I think it's having consequent, uh, unintended consequences on morale for our police department recruitment. Um, you know, I believe some of the comments that, that has been made to the media are misleading and false about city council.
Such as?
You're, you're saying one or two council, if I remember correctly, in Dominion Post, I'd have to find it. You're, you're saying that one or two council members might not be choosing the people you want on the board?
I think you're mistaken.
I have to go back and find the article.
On WA, I'm sorry, I, I had it pulled up earlier in, in anticipation of this conversation. I believe you, sir, were on WAJR and said at least one city council member was blackballing an applicant, was the exact quote.
Thank you.
Hmm, are you sure?
I am certain, a hundred percent certain. And I did not appreciate, I contacted Councilor Butcher the day that I read and listened to that interview.
I don't, I don't recall saying that exactly.
Can you pull up that?
Convenient, I will.
That's not Dean, there's others.
Um, we know that some good people who have applied, we don't know why, oh, I'm sorry, this was Mr. Cohen. I'm sorry, it was not you. Um, some good people who have applied, we don't know why they were rejected specifically. They were not told they were rejected, said Cohen. I know that one of the people who was not seated on the board who applied was an advocate for homeless people. I'm guessing that one or more people on city council blackballed her, he said. Do you think that that's appropriate to go to the media and say things like that about the board that governs your commission?
Um, do I think it's appropriate? I'd really have to know about, you know, you're, you're saying that Bob said that, but I don't know who told him what. I don't know whether the person that interviewed that felt they were blackballed told him that they thought they were blackballed.
Mr. Cohen, would you like to address? I had a lot of, um, concerns that came out of this interview with some of the statements that were made about council. I have ongoing concerns with some of the statements that have been made by members of the board. I mean, just today in Dominion Post, there was an article that seemed like members of the board were, were making some pretty serious accusations against, um, police officers, specifically in relation to the body cam footage. Like they're purposefully turning it off to hide information and things like that, which I think, I, I mean, I, I take issue with that when we're not sure the, it hasn't.
Well, I think, I, I know, I know what you're talking about. And I think where that comment came from was from someone who's a defense attorney, who's.
He's a member of the board who represents the council on this commission.
But I get that. But also I think that we were in a meeting and we were discussing something, correct? I mean, we're not supposed to talk about anything in the meeting? I mean, public heard it. I understand, I understand you may not like it, but if that's his experience, because we, there's people on the board that have different experiences. And he was just talking from his experience, that's all I can say.
I've been told by a lot of members of the police department that they feel that their interactions with the board or, um, their activities in general have been misrepresented by the board. And, you know, I've always kind of just thought that maybe that was a little bit of a grudge or, or something about the board specifically. But then I start seeing things about us that I don't believe to be true. So I'm really wondering if, if it is just a grudge against the commission or, um, if there's merit to some of the things that I'm hearing from officers.
I think that if you take, you take a look at the work that we're doing, you know, you're, I understand you're being concerned about what has been said. But I, I think, you know, take a, take a look at the work that we're trying to do. Um, it's, we're, it's, we're a work in progress. I mean, it's a new board, uh, we're trying to find our way. We, we, we have good intentions, I don't think anybody has any bad intentions. I think.
I did not say that.
I know, I know, but I, I just think that, um, peo- people have, it's just like we do, we, we always said that we don't want feelings to get in the way of facts. I mean, that's, that's been the way I wanted to approach this. But the whole, and I think that's what ends up happening. People might express something, but when you look at what eventually comes out as a result of that, uh, it's, it's a consensus. You know, we, we're trying, we try to do things based on a consensus and we try to get people's feelings out of it. Um, if the data shows this, this is where we wanna go. That's, that's kinda how I wanna go about it. I, I try not to, you know, I don't wanna hurt anybody's feelings or, that's not my intent. My, my intent is to try to make it so that police aren't, people aren't so intimidated by police. And also that, uh, the community has, has a place in, in this. That they understand why these things are done. Uh, that they understand what's going on, they understand things, it's just not a black hole. Uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I don't know. I, I guess that's the best way I can say it is that there's no, there's no ill intent. I think we all wanna do a good job.
But I think when accusations are made before any policy has actually been reviewed, it doesn't give the police a good feeling about interacting with you all and, um.
I, I, you mean, you're talking about the body cam in this particular? Well, again, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong about the thirty-second delay. If I'm, you know, that's, I don't think I, I'm going based on what somebody who's had experience with it has said. Um, but, but then again, we're talking body cams, that protects both parties.
I understand. I just, before we really get into anything, we're already making accusations. And it doesn't, doesn't allow the police department to go into conversations with an open mind. And I hope you understand that, um, if, if the deputy chief or anyone that you did not wish to mention by name, so you had to, uh, rescind your initial report, we are twenty officers down. And I understand that the review board is, and the work of the review board is the board's main focus. But public safety is the main focus of our police department. And being short-staffed, if it takes them time, it takes them time. I, I. I, I want them to be, and you, you indicated that you had a meeting today and you have another meeting in a couple of weeks with the chief, or not today. You indicated you met this month and you're meeting with the chief in a couple of weeks. I think that's great. I want them to have an open relationship with you and I want communication to happen. But I think the way that the board is operating currently is turning them off to those conversations.
Are you specifically talking about the chief and the deputy chief or rank and file?
Um, right now, I guess, the chief and deputy chief. I know that at least one of them was very unhappy recently.
Well, I'm sorry.
So, I think it's fine to say we should have better communication staff. I don't know if this is a form to be doing that. It seems a little out of line. We could have conversations with our, our board about how we have conversations and interface with the public and the press. I mean, I expressed concern about, you know, that and had to talk to members of the board. I would also encourage people, like, maybe attend some of their meetings because the, the ways that these are conducted, the ways that the board conducts itself is not like sitting there accusing police officers all day long. And there's a lot of interface and back and forth that has happened. Like especially, I thought that case study, and I think I expressed this to council when it happened, that I attended, was like really productive conversation between the police and the review board. I agree with you that, like, you know, we could structure our communications better and, you know, interface, the, the board could interface with the public better because I think that's, you know, part of the challenge that the board faces. But I, I think also, like, in the case of when people say, "I had an experience where a body cam was not turned on." I'm not sure that we can say that, like, we should be policing what people are saying in those board meetings. I don't think that's, I mean, how is that? What if a member of the public says that? You know, I understand...
I mean, I think it's one thing to state, to state a fact that I had an instance where a body cam was not turned on.
Right.
But this person went on to infer on whether... It's one thing to forget, I guess. It's another thing to deliberately turn it off when you're having an exchange with somebody.
Right. And, and I, we can have...
That's an accusation.
We can have conversations about modulating...
Well, I also, I also, I think, the one thing, that wasn't specifically about a Morgantown Police Department, about the Morgantown Police Department. This individual came from someplace else. He was, he's a, he's a defense attorney, right? So, that could have been any police. That could have been state police, that could have been anybody. It wasn't necessarily related directly to Morgantown Police Department.
But again, I, I think we'd have conversations about modulating conversation, modulating language. And I think that's totally fair. Especially in how we want to make sure that the board is facing the public, how the public interacts with it, and then how the police department interacts with the board. I've seen positive interactions between the police department and the board. That's all I've witnessed in terms of how the meetings go. And I think that it's been productive. So, I don't, and so I would, I would definitely not agree that they're not meeting the mission. I think there's always room for improvement in any one of our boards and commissions. And there's, yeah. So, so I think that, you know, it's, it's totally fine to have those conversations. I don't know if during an annual report, then, like, impugning the entire existence of the board is necessarily appropriate, but...
I did not impugn the entire existence. I'm just, like, something was said about me very publicly in the media, so I'm taking a public meeting to address, but I don't believe it was correct.
And like I said, I think that's totally fair. I, I think saying, like, that the board's not meeting the mission is not fair.
I'm going to go ahead and address the body cam.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to address the body cam because you're wrong. When a body cam is activated, its meeting begins to record an audio and video. It actually backs up and captures thirty seconds of video before the body camera is activated. That is a time period when the audio, there is no audio on there. So, just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
I'm clarifying it because I wear one at work, so I just want to make sure that you know what you said as well. So, again, I, I don't understand what any of this has to do with the responsibilities of your board. So...
What doesn't happen?
Well, pretty much everything, the media, while you're going to the media and talking. Again, I've said this again, we are twenty-two officers down. These guys, these men and women work hard. And we should all be grateful for that. And I feel like you're looking for something nefarious from them or...
No, no, no.
So, another thing I would say is that totally fair to say, like, the communications and media, I think, could have been improved. The other thing I would say, though, is like, we all attend boards and commission meetings all the time. The paper's often at theirs. The paper is often looking, because like, you know, people are interested to know what the police review board's doing. It gets clicks, right, to publish a story about them. And so, the media has an incentive to be there. So, it's, there is a lot more media scrutiny there. So, like, it's not always necessarily that they're going to the media. Again, like, I think the criticisms, those criticisms are fair. The, the thing I would ask again is like, so what is it besides going to the media that you think is not serving the board purpose?
You're talking here?
Yeah.
Repeat the last part. I was thinking about something else.
Um, besides, because you were asked, what was it that the board's doing that's inappropriate? And you said like going...
I told you, I said...
Yeah, you said, go, hold on, hold on.
I addressed that.
Yeah.
I don't need to address it again, I'm just telling you.
Hold on, one second. That, you said going to the media. Was there something else other than that? Because I agree with you about that.
I just sat here and discussed a speeding issue.
Right.
I'm not sure where that's coming in on this, this discussion.
Because it's policy.
I, I don't understand the body cam footage. I've asked again why that's a part of their responsibilities.
I think, I think what he was saying, okay, I, I get you now. So, I think what he was saying is reviewing the body cam policy, right? Which is specifically what they're charged with doing, right? Would you agree? No? No, I'm just, I'm just asking.
I'm sure you understand that these relationships are difficult and require some finesse. I appreciate that. You're in a position of reviewing policy. You're actually handing out a judgment of sort. And, and it's got to make people uncomfortable to some degree. I think it's expected. I, I, you know, and I wouldn't criticize you for that.
Well, we've had, we've had very good conversations with the police department.
Well, and I'm hoping that would continue. And, and what I would look for is somehow avoiding circumstances that create ill feelings. When you request data, for example, one of the questions I would have for you is, "What data?" And when you get the data, what's your purpose?
The data that we've requested, we, we requested a lot of different data points. And what we're looking for is type of crime, where the crime occurred.
Well, I've seen, I've seen that...
This is one or two things. I mean, there's, there's more. I can't tell you everything that we're looking for, but...
You know, I've seen that as long, as well as heat match indicating problem areas in the city. I mean, that's all available on public. So, I, but, oh, that's okay. Again, I, I would, we're, one of the difficulties we've had with all the interviews is we're trying to find unbiased people, you know, that will actually be appropriate to your, your commission and, and that will not bring any kind of prior preconception of what should be or would be done, or what they think they can do. Because a lot of them have come to us and have really had ideas of what they thought would be one way or the other. And I mean, right or left. So, we've been cautious and, and we've been deliberate. And I would ask you, pleased to be that too, cautious and deliberate.
I think, I think what it is, we're, we're being cautious and deliberate as far as what we're doing, but maybe, I guess, apparently not cautious enough of what we're saying. I understand, I understand, I understand the concern, but never mind. I just, I just don't think that, again, we didn't, we didn't mean any harm by it. Because I, because I remember what you're talking about as far as the WA, it was a WAJR interview. And if, I think we were, we were discussing, we were discussing frustration about not having enough members on the board, I believe is what it was. But I think, you know, I don't, never mind. I think, I don't think we pointed out any individual. I, I don't know, just...
And just for, I guess, public knowledge, since that was, I mean, it, I listened to the interview. I read the article about the interview. It was said that in the last several months, there had been dozens of applicants who couldn't even get an interview.
Dozens?
And we interviewed someone this evening, but it had been months since anyone else had applied to be interviewed. And I, I could be mistaken. The letters come from the mayors, which are here to my right. But people who we had definitely decided no on were informed. They may not have been told an exact reason, but boards and commissions are appointed at the will of council. We don't have to have a reason if we just don't appoint someone, honestly.
Additionally, I would add those meetings are confidential.
So...
I think, just to be fair, it did take quite a while for police review board letters to go out, but I do remember this.
Well, I think there were some people that we were like, well...
Yeah.
We had a lot of applicants all at once and we didn't send out letters immediately because we were like, well, maybe if we don't find someone else that fits this, we'll keep that. And so, it did take a while and...
You're trying to make balance.
Yeah, we've, we've been working hard. I just, I didn't appreciate the implication that we've been neglecting our duties because I can't tell you how much time I spend doing interviews for boards and commissions. That is volunteer time on my part. I don't, we, we had a special meeting two weeks ago just to interview people for boards and commissions. We came in three hours of our own time to do that. So, I apologize that we have not filled your board quickly enough, but we are hard at work on it.
We also didn't appoint until we gave everybody a fair opportunity to interview, which I think also needs to be noted, is that we willingly made sure to interview every person that applied. Because it is important that we allow all residents and all citizens to have an opportunity to have their chance to be heard and have a seat at the table, particularly at this board.
And with this board having specific seats for specific, you know, some have to be city residents, some have to be disparaged populations, some has to be recommended by a, it's been a...
We've had whole charts.
It's nuanced.
Well, I'm sure, because that's why...
We've fulfilled all the, all the portions.
That's why I know...
And someone would apply and they didn't fit any of those and the seats that were more outside of the realm of the specific seats were filled. You just, it's not, we're not doing this without thought.
And honestly, seven people is, is many or more than most of our boards and commissions operate with, so we have trouble finding applicants.
A lot of people don't realize they're not actually city residents. Because they have Morgantown address.
And I don't know if that happened to some mayors, but that happened to some really good applicants that...
For all boards and commissions.
Human Rights Commission is...
She's nodding vigorously behind you.
Yeah. So, I do think that, that the more that we can solve some of these issues closer to where there are problems, such as more, as closely as possible, if you're having good interactions with the police department, keep doing that. And if you want to know why we haven't filled something, maybe we should just talk.
And also, also first, you know, if you're concerned about anything, you know, this, this is the first time I heard about the media stuff, all right? If you've got an issue, just let us know. I mean, just let me know.
Well, so what I'm saying is, then if you have an issue that you would like more people, you guys can call any one of us. It goes two ways. You could have came to us, but instead you chose the media to go to, to embarrass us or whatever.
Well...
That was not the intent.
Well, that's what it felt like. It's, it's okay to go to the media. It's just somehow, the more that we can solve things closer to the problem, the better.
Great.
Is that enough?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we lose John?
No, he's over there.
He's hiding.
Oh, sorry, he's still ducked in.
All right.
Budget.
Up to her.
Presentation of the fiscal year 2025, 2026 city budget.
I do have a PowerPoint. I'm really hoping it's up there. Right there.
We're hoping as well.
I don't know. Hey, Steve. Hopefully, she's got it right here on the desktop. Outstanding. Excellent. Well, I have the privilege of presenting the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. This proposed budget reflects our unwavering commitment for fiscal responsibility, strategic investment, and community well-being. Now, this is a culmination of an extensive collaboration and dedication from a lot of individuals, a lot of teams, a lot of departments here. It wasn't just myself, it wasn't just finance, it wasn't just city managers. It was a combination of a lot of people, including department heads from every department, including some managers from departments, a lot on our finance team, everybody in the city managers, the assistant city manager, even Carol. I want to give a shout out to her. I know she's not here, but Carol Allen did a lot of work behind the scenes for this. So, there was a lot of people that had a lot of hands in this. And this is the culmination of that dedication from our team. So, I'm very, very excited to do this presentation. We do have three highlights that I want to talk to you tonight about. First, we have our community agencies. That's where we do make that strategic investment within our community for those agencies that do provide those services, much-needed services to our community, such that the city government itself, we don't provide those, but yet we can help fund those agencies that do provide those necessary needs. They provide such things as enhancing the community's health, well-billing, well-being, quality of life, and safety. And we want to continue to, to support and to collaborate with those agencies. We're going to talk about those just at a high level. I know that we have talked about those in detail. I know that, Dave, we're going to be talking about that tomorrow. Brian, please reach out to Christine. We will talk about that in detail, definitely. We would also like to talk about our revenue projections. And as you see, I have lots of slides for that. But overall, you're going to see that the overall combined trend that we're looking at is relatively flat. We don't see a lot of ups and downs. Our, our revenues are relatively stable. And I'm going to point that out here. And finally, we're going to talk about our expenditures. And I'm going to talk about our, just the key highlights, what really changed from this year to last year. So, the first thing here, again, is that I'm just going to talk about our acknowledgements. Special thanks to Kim. Special thanks to Kim, I know that he's gone, but he was here during the first few weeks that we were doing a lot of the heavy lifting, a lot of the legwork. So I would like to thank him for that, thank Emily, Damien especially, who's picked up a lot of slack after Kim and Emily, Emily being on leave. So he's done a lot of the heavy lifting now, definitely want to say thank you very much for that, did a lot of work. Again, Carol Allen in the Finance Department, I'd like to thank Denise Stefanisi, I'd like to thank Samantha Baldwin, I'd like to thank Courtney Letoche, and then of course, our Communications Department. Brad and Holly did a phenomenal job, they reviewed a lot of it after the fact just to make sure that, yes, it looks good, yes, I actually did spell stuff right, yes, and yes, we had to make a couple corrections afterwards, but they did a lot of the review, making it look pretty, so I definitely like, really want to make sure that they get the respect that they deserve for that. They did a lot of hard work, a lot of dedication, again, a lot of hands involved in this, a lot of moving parts, and I'm very pleased to submit this to you folks. We could talk about the budget timeline, kind of the process, we did start in October 2024. Again, that's when we started meeting with our department heads, that's when we started meeting with the individual department managers, we did have a lot of feedback from them. That's initially where about 98% of the budget where that information did come from, it did come from the department heads themselves. This isn't something that originally started at the Finance Department level, it actually started with them, what they were thinking, what their needs of their departments were, and that got brought into the, to each individual operating budget. Not only operating budget, but also the workforce and the capital budget itself. So again, a lot of moving parts, a lot of people involved in that. And then, just kind of the highlights of the timeline, we get all the way now through January. We did have some things that were scheduled that were unfortunately delayed due to weather. We did have two weeks in there where we did have stuff that was delayed, unfortunately, and that did kind of put us behind on our overall proposed schedule, and we have shared that with you. I know, Brian, you reached out about that at one point. I am happy to say that we are actually on track now to hit all of our hard dates that are dictated by the West Virginia State Auditor's Office. So even though we have been delayed, even though we did run into, you know, the situation where, unfortunately, yes, you have a new guy this year in finance, unfortunately, yes, we had a, I shouldn't say turnover, but we had a retirement, you know, with the city manager. And again, Damien, thank you so much for stepping up with that, and with Emily on leave, so yes, very happy about that. And I see everyone's checking their watches, so I will, I will get going.
There's just a basketball game at nine o'clock, don't worry about it.
I know, I know, but hey, you guys put me on practically last. Okay, so, let's start right off with our agencies, and again, I'm just going to talk about the high level here. You can see, overall, when we do talk about our agencies now, this is our nonprofit and quasi-governmental agencies. You can see right here between the Capital Escrow Fund and the Opiate Settlement Fund, yes, we are bringing in the Opiate Settlement Fund this year. We have approximately $624,000 that we are spending across 13 different entities. And then when we talk about our public service agencies, this right here, you can see we have five separate agencies where we are funding approximately, well, actually, just over $6 million, and you can see, and I did break out Ballpark, so Ballpark does, they do receive a lot of the funding here from four different funds from five different areas, but that's almost approximately 4.6. I can't see that very far. 4.6 million dollars of that from all the different funding sources and the different funds within those. So yes, we do, we have budgeted for a significant investment in our community between our community, our agency funding, and also our public service agencies. Any questions on that? Okay. So next, what I want to do is I want to start highlighting here our major city revenues. Now, this right here, this is just a chart, and you do have it in front of you here, I do have it on the slides. You can see, just kind of broken out here by our major types of revenue, we have our property tax, our BNO tax, which I'm going to get to a little bit more specifically here in a moment. We do have our sales tax, the liquor tax, and then our hotel motel. Overall, combined though, when we start talking about the major, major sources of revenue, I'm going to first start talking about the property taxes. Now, when you take a look at a trend here, now, if you were just to take your hand and try to, try to do a trend analysis, a very, very basic trend analysis, you will see that that's relatively flat, that's relatively the same year to year, and rightfully so. This year, we are not budgeting for an increase in our real property taxes received, and I do want to point out that our real property taxes do represent approximately 12% of our overall general fund revenue. That has not, that particular percentage has not changed or wavered over the past five years, and if you look back 10 years, and if you look back even further in history, that percentage is relatively the same percent year after year after year. You don't really, we don't see an increase in our property taxes at all. Now, the next that we have here is our municipal sales tax, and I do want to highlight this one, because this is where one of the main sources of revenue that we are expecting a change. Now, and this change isn't anything that the city of Morgantown had itself. This is actually due to a change resulting from our neighboring municipalities that are actually establishing home rule, either have or will be establishing home rules, so they will be receiving that additional municipal sales tax. So what the state of West Virginia did is that instead of basing our boundaries for sales tax purposes on the ZIP code plus four, they are now using a more precise GIS data, which we have provided, and we have been told to expect a potential decrease of up to 10% of municipal sales tax in the year of that implementation, where the state is now using the GIS data compared to the ZIP code data. So it's not anything that we have done, and I do want to make sure that that is crystal clear to everybody, we didn't do anything wrong, it's just the state's boundaries for municipal sales tax purposes is now going to be based on more accurate data, and we have been warned that we could experience a potential 10% decrease in the first year because of that. Does that make sense to everybody? Now, the municipal sales tax, that actually goes into the Municipal Sales Tax Fund and then gets divvied up into four different areas, and that's according to the city ordinance. So this graph right here that I have on the screen, you can see from year to year to year, there's some years, actually fiscal year 2024 was more than fiscal year 2023. Fiscal year 2025, we are actually on par to be on track with fiscal year 2024, but again, if you look at that top bar, you see how it's less than the others? Well, that's because we are anticipating a 10% decrease. We are hoping we won't, but we are budgeting because that's what we were warned. If that makes sense.
John, when does that GIS utilization go into effect?
That goes into effect, actually, I believe it went into effect, or will be in effect, July 1st, 2025. They actually received the data from us months ago, and yes, it will be in effect January, or July 1st, 2025. Now, when we start talking about the Municipal Sales Tax Fund, again, that is now, that is divvied out according to our ordinance. So you can see right here, we have 25%, which is allocated to the General Fund. We have 25% which is allocated to Bo Park. We have 25% which is allocated to our Capital Escrow Fund, and then, this is new this year, before it went into the Police and Fire Unfunded Pension Liability Retirement Fund, but now, and we'll get into it a little bit more in detail, moving forward fiscal year 26, it is allocated to go directly half and half into the Police Pension Fund and the Fire Pension Fund. So it's not being retained in the Retirement Fund to fund that pension, unfunded pension liability, it is now going directly into their investment accounts. So this right here, I know this is the budget, the percentage though, when we receive this, they do get 25%, 25%, 12 and a half, 12 and a half, and 25%. So even though this is what our budgeted expectations are, the percentages will be applied to the actual amounts which are received. Does that make sense? So if we get more, that's great, if we get less, that's not great, but still, it's what we got. This right here, this is when we start talking about our Business and Occupation Tax, and this is, this is a major source of funding here, even more so than our real property tax. Now, when we start talking about BNO tax, there's two different types of taxes. And I'm going to flip here to my notes because of talking about them. There we go. The first one, you can see that blue line, that's our regular Business and Occupation Tax revenue. Now, this excludes that tax on construction projects over $5 million. This, you can see, over the past three years has remained relatively constant. It did take a dip when we started talking about fiscal year 21, 20, basically, that's when the effects of COVID actually hit. So we did have a significant decrease in revenue, at least significant in my eyes. When you start talking about trends, it really didn't look like that big of a dip, but yet, for us fiscally, yes, it was. But you can see a quote, that the past three years, relatively stable, relatively flat. We are expecting the exact same for fiscal year 2026. The bottom, that orange line right there, that's the construction tax. That's, that's where we start talking about the tax, the Business and Occupation Tax for those construction projects at over $5 million. What I really want to point out, you can see right there in fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2022, you can see that fiscal year 2021, we had a big jump, that was 6.2, well, just over $6 million in fiscal year 2021, fiscal year 2022, you're talking $4.4 million compared to what we are projecting right now, which is 1.5. Now, this, this right here, we actually do know of a significant project, which is, has started, which, that's the WVU Medicine, the I Center and Parking Garage Project. We are anticipating that we will bring in a significant amount of Business and Occupation Tax revenue. We just can't predict, for our budget purposes, the exact timing and the exact amount that we will bring in in fiscal year 26. So because we can't estimate an exact dollar amount or a reasonable estimate of how much that is, we are not budgeting for that additional amount, we are budgeting what we have been in trending over the past two years. But we will do budget revisions when we do start realizing those revenues, when they do start coming in, that's when we will bring it back into the budget. Does that make sense to everybody? So we can't say if this is going to come in starting immediately, we can't say that it's going to start coming in mid-year, it could start coming in at the tail end of the year. But what we really want to do, just because we want to be fiscally responsible, is that we want to make sure that we are bringing that in when we do, at that exact dollar amount. That way, we're not over-budgeting for something that we won't be getting in for till the next year. Does that make sense? Did I, okay. I just want to make sure I'm stating that correctly. And then overall, I know it's not on the chart, but if we add the total amount of business, the regular Business and Occupation Tax with the Business and Occupation Construction Tax, that represents 41% of our overall general fund revenue. So remember, we talked about property taxes being 12%, Business and Occupation Tax combined, that's 41%. This is our largest dollar amount when we start talking about revenue. Fiscal year 25, we are, we are actually on track to realize exactly what was budgeted. I believe we were at 51% at the last look that I did at, as of December 31st, and we were at, again, I'm going from memory, I believe it was 59% at the end of January. So we are on track, now this is seasonal, but we are on track for fiscal year 25, and we are projecting very similar amounts for fiscal year 2026. Okay, any questions on that? Okay. The next type of major service revenue, or the next major revenue is going to be our service revenue fees, and that comprises of two different fees, we have first off, our Safe Streets and Safe Community Fee, this is more commonly known as our MSF fee, and then we also have our fire fees. Now, our fire fees, that's the green, and it's kind of hard to see, but I wish I really could zoom in a little bit here, but for fiscal year 2026, you're going to see that fire fee is going to jump. You can see for the past five years, they're almost identical between the two, but in fiscal year 2026, we do have that one-time 15% increase in our fire fees. Now, that is to fund the, that's going to, we're going to talk about why we have that 15%. I'm going to hold that conversation here for a second, but we, we are expecting that 15% one-time increase, and that's why we do have that slight divergence there between the two different fees in fiscal year 2026. Did you have a question? Okay. Overall, between the two fees combined, that represents 24% of our total general fund revenue. Now, for our MSF, you can see right here, this is the allocation of how we have allocated the MSF fees that we currently receive, and you can see right here, roughly 60% is allocated to Public Works, with 45% going to improvements and maintenance, 10% going to personnel, 5% going to equipment. And then the remaining 40% is allocated to our Police Department, with 34% going to personnel and 6% going to equipment. So that's how we are spending that MSF money when we receive it, and that's how it's allocated, and you can see that we are budgeting $4.2 million for fiscal year 2026, and the corresponding expenditures related to that. And this is just a different graph, a different type of graph, so that you can visually see how that looks. So you can see on the very right-hand side for our fiscal year 2026 proposed budget, the very top blue, that's going to be for our Police Department Personnel. We're going to have the, what is that, orange, yellow? That's our Capital Escrow for Street Equipment. We have the gray, now that is the bulk of where the revenue is, is being allocated to, and that's for our Capital Escrow for Streets Improvement. And then we have our orange, which represents the Street Department Personnel, and then finally, we have the darker blue, which represents the Police Department Personnel. So that's how we're, visually how we are allocating that, that fee. Does that make sense? Okay. Next, this is where we're going to talk about our Fire Protection Service Fee, and again, this is where we have a one-time 15% increase. And these three different lines, this is going to be where we are breaking out our fire fee between residential, commercial, and tax-exempt properties. Now, you can see in 2021, 2022, 2023, where there is a, you'll, you do see increases and decreases between the tax-exempt property, the commercial property, really what this represents, this is when properties are bought and sold between different types of entities. So it could, we could have commercial property, which is sold to a nonprofit, so therefore, that, that fee is now allocated to a different line, if you will. But overall, it's the same exact building, it's the same exact fee. Nothing really changes a whole lot when it does come to that. But I did want to point out that, yes, we are including that one-time 15% increase, and that has been adopted in order to support the city's required minimum contribution into the Fire Pension Plan, and also address rising costs within the Fire Department. And this last slide here, overall, this is our overall combined general fund revenue. Now, keep in mind, this does exclude any prior year carryover, but you can see, again, if you were to take your hand and just move it across from left to right, even with the potential 10% decrease in sales tax, even with the one-time increase 15% in our fire fee, we are still budgeting and expecting relatively flat and stable revenues overall for our general fund. And you can see right here, our fiscal year 2024 actual. And you can see right here, our fiscal year 2024 actual revenue was $39.7 million. Our 2025 budget was 39.5, actually, 39.7 million, and our '26 proposed budget, $39.4 million. Really relatively flat. Does that make sense? Now, let's get into our expenditures. So overall, for our city expenditures, we break this out between personnel and operating. This line here just talks about, really what I want to highlight here, that top line, that's our personnel expense. With all the other lines, this is our non-personnel or other operating expenditures. I know it breaks it out in different categories, but really what I want to highlight here is that our personnel really is our number-one expenditure overall. Personnel not only includes our gross wages, but also includes our employee benefits, also includes our retirement, also includes our workers' comp. So really, when we start talking about our workforce, this is the overwhelming bulk of the city's expenditures. Now, when it comes to personnel, I do want to highlight here, and I know I don't have a slide for it, but we've included only three additional personnel, new positions in the fiscal year 2026. There are two new positions that are included in the general fund. One is a new grant technician, which is going to be included in the city manager's department, and then one additional firefighter for the fire department to replace the firefighter that is now stationed over at the airport. And then we also have one additional new position at the airport for the operations and maintenance specialists. So that's included this year. Another thing that I want to highlight is the COLA. So we have, we landed on the 2.7% cost of living adjustment to be applied to the salaries and wages for fiscal year 2026. This is addition to the step increase, which is an average of 0.8% increase, depending on which step that person is in and where they will land next year. So if they're moving, just as an example, from step four to step five, that would be a 0.82%. If they move from a step five to a step six, that could be a 0.8 or a 0.79% increase. Overall, when you, when we talk about the increases in step, it is an average of 0.8%. So if we add the 0.8% to the 2.7%, we're looking at a total average increase of 3.5% to existing personnel. So I did want to point that out as well. Now, this relates to the slide. This is when we start talking about our police and fire pension. Very excited that we are discussing this, that we have now budgeted for it. On January 7th, 2025, city council approves, approved the closing of the police and fire pension funds to new entrants. So only to new entrants, those that are existing members, those existing retirees, they will see exactly no change to their benefits. So I did want to make sure that we did point that out. Our existing personnel, our existing retirees, no change at all. It's only for new entrants affected to July 1st, 2025. And then for new hires, hired on or after July 1st, 2025, they will now be in our West Virginia State, it's, what's it called, the MP, MP, well, it's the state plan, state retirement. What's it called again?
MPFRS.
MPFRS. There we go. That's a mouthful. But yes, it's going to be on the state retirement plan. So basically, what's going to end up happening is that they're going to be in the state retirement plan, but yet, we still have our current employees, we still have our current retirees that are in our legacy plans, and that's when we start talking about our funding for this. Now, the key highlights to that is, number one, again, we secured the participants' benefits. That was a huge deal. And as you can see here on the slide, the whole reason why we were talking about this, combined unfunded pension liability. Now, this is over and beyond how much they had in investments. You can see, combined between both police and fire, is $113.6 million. Overall, on the bottom here, the unfunded percentage, we are talking almost 78% of that total liability was unfunded. That's why we had that conversation, that's why we had all the meetings, that's why city council approved the closing to new entrants and moving to what's called the optional two funding method for these plans. We also, and I do want to highlight, we minimized the financial impact to our city's taxpayers and residents, and we ensured that we can afford the proposed change in funding method. We can afford the increase in the required minimum annual employer contributions under this funding method. And finally, again, our current plan participants will not see any change to their benefits. As a matter of fact, we are securing their benefits to make sure that, yes, they are going to receive those and continue to receive those benefits. So I did want to highlight that. That's a, that's a very big deal. Now, when we do start talking about that, how we are paying for it, we are paying this, and I touched on it briefly, but a portion of this is going to be now funded directly through the municipal sales tax fund. And you can see here, and I highlighted again, this is the same slide we hit before, the 12.5 and the 12.5, that's going directly now into the police and to the fire pension fund. So the amount that we do receive quarterly will be invested into their plan's investment accounts. So that's very important now moving forward. They are, they are going to receive their money. They have actually started receiving it from the last quarter, and we also funded it by our one-time employer contribution from the retirement fund that has already been invested into their retirement investment accounts to help fund that as well. I don't have a slide for this one, only because I ran out of time and I stopped putting together slides. I do want to talk about, real briefly, about our employer health insurance. Over the past year, the city has experienced a significant rise in healthcare claims within its self-funded employee health insurance plan. This increase is primarily due to two factors. Number one, the higher number of one-time high-cost claims, and this was especially true in the months of October, November, and December. December was a record-breaking historic high for the city's claims. And then also the trending high-cost prescriptions, which we have seen over the entire year, and they still continue to, we still continue to see that trend. Now, it's very important to note that with a self-funded insurance plan, we often encounter cyclical fluctuations in our healthcare costs. Those are driven by claim variability, utilization trends, and very importantly, our stop-loss insurance factors. We do have that in place. We have, over the past month and a half, been receiving those stop-loss insurance recovery payments, which has been very nice. And we are now starting to see that over January and now February trending down, which is very, very good. But right now, I do want to highlight back in January '24, that the city did transfer $3.3 million from its financial stabilization fund to the life and health fund to address those rising costs, to stabilize our self-funded health insurance plan. And that was just to ensure the uninterrupted continuation of our healthcare benefits to our city employees. Now, for fiscal year 2026, the city's anticipated employer share of healthcare costs is included in each operational department's budget. It's based on the number of employees within that budget, and it depends on if they are a single plan or if they're on a family plan. The individual rates for the employer have not yet changed, but could change, subject to our work group that we have that has been meeting. We've met twice already. We anticipate meeting at least monthly to discuss changes and potential increases to those rates. We have not budgeted an increase yet. Okay? We are hoping that there are cost-saving ideas that could help bring this back into what I like to call affordability, but yet, we have not increased those employer rates yet. So I do want to make sure that everyone's fully aware that we did not budget for an increased rate. Okay? Does that make sense to everybody?
No. It does not make any sense to me. We need to budget for it.
The last thing here, I do want to point out that for our contingency budget, for general fund, we initially set our contingency budget for $400,000. That is $200,000 less than what was budgeted last year. The primary decrease of that $200,000 is due to the additional funding required to support the capital escrow fund's proposed budget. And remember, a lot of that hinges on that business and occupation construction tax revenue. So again, this is one of those moving parts where we will probably be bringing in budget revisions when we do start realizing additional revenues. But for now, because we do want to make sure that we are budgeting on what we know, not what we want happen, we are actually budgeting $200,000 less than what was originally budgeted for last year. Okay? There's a lot of moving parts. There's still going to be the results of the fiscal year 2025. If we have anything left over that we can carry forward, that will be worked into that. And then we also have those additional revenues that could happen. We don't know exactly how much or when, but when we do realize those additional revenues, we will bring those back in as budget revisions. Does that make sense? And then finally, the last graph, this is just a summary here of all the operating budgets and our capital escrow budget. And you can see here, for general fund in the top left-hand side, our total proposed budget is $45.4 million. Municipal airport, we have is $5.5 million. Municipal sales tax is $9 million. Arts and culture, we have is 520, almost 527,000. The Met, we have is 200,000. For the Hazel Ruby McQueen Park, we have 670,000. Cole Severance Fund, we have 122,000. Opiate Settlement is 122,000. And capital escrow, we have is 7.7 million. Any questions?
I think you could make a whole, like, a whole song out of all of that.
Yeah. Well, seriously, I had 28 pages, and that was just, the summary was 28 pages. I'm trying really hard not to take up a whole lot of time.
Thanks, John.
Very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue to hit home runs.
Very thorough.
Find us some more money, will you?
When I asked you about the timing, I wasn't, oh, yeah, yeah. I was starting to say we're late. I was just, just for some citizens that asked, and I wanted to just, and that was a really great summary that you sent me, so I appreciate it.
Yep. No problem. I wasn't putting you on the spot for any reason other than...
Just so you don't, didn't think I was trying to say, John, where is all the stuff you're late? It wouldn't, yeah.
Seriously, I know.
Appreciate you.
Right on time.
Friggin' you guy, tell me that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For any of you who are waiting for the public portion, it's the moment. So we're going to open a public portion.
Is there a signing sheet?
Pardon? There doesn't happen to be a signing sheet. If you'd like to come up and have a moment?
Never done this. Do I need to, you guys need name, address, phone number? Zip code? Just kidding.
Name and address.
My name's Adam Manier. I live 648 Park Street in South Park.
Perfect. That's what you need.
I know some of you. I've never met some of you. I appreciate everything you do, and I'm not here to complain, I'm here to give you a cry for help. So just take that into account. And if I sound nervous, I probably am. If you were driving outside city limits and you passed a car on fire on the side of the road, outside city limits, with people actively in distress, what would you do? If moments after you passed this car, a friend called to tell you about it, would that increase the urgency? If you arrive at your destination, open your Facebook and see more photos of people currently in distress, would that change your reaction? Save that for later. My friend visited me recently from out of town, and he said, "Did my GPS just route me through pothole road? I've never seen anything like that in my entire life." Westover exit 152 between McDonald's and Morgantown Mall is impassable without risk of damage to the vehicle. It's not the only place, but like the other locations, it's an emergency. Public officials, county commissions, and state road departments should never let roads get this bad. I think we can all agree, exit 152 off I-79 is a busy part of State Route 19. It's an important enough section of road to encourage WDTV to do a piece about it just yesterday. And this is also from WDTV on January 28th. And if we're already doing this, I appreciate it. The city of Bridgeport is collaborating with the West Virginia Division of Highways to fill potholes on their streets in an effort to get ahead of potholes increasing size and quantity. The city of Bridgeport Public Works Department is working alongside the Department of Highways to patch the potholes in the state-maintained roads, which include Main Street, Route 31, Benidam, Johnson, I don't know, Bridgeport. The Department of Highways will provide the material, approximately 13 bags of cold patch, and the city will perform the work. Cold patching will use temporary fix until after March 1st. That was a month ago. Are we doing this? Does Morgantown do that as well with Department of Highways partnering?
Not allowed to.
Okay.
We can talk about that during the managers' report later.
Okay, just, the question is out there.
Oh.
But that was a month ago. And while I acknowledge that work has been done in Westover on Holland Avenue, it seems like an attempt at a prank to fix one side of Westover and not the other. And this situation in Bridgeport is a good example, but it's not the only one available. When the president finds the power to take certain actions is determined by another branch of government, he decides that emergency is in place to bypass said branch of government. Is this the right way? Is there a precedent? These questions don't matter to him. He is determined to see his vision through. I called the city Morgantown and asked what we can do. The city employee was delightful and helpful, and let me know that nothing can be done, not only because exit 152 is in Westover, but that it is located on State Route 19, which is the jurisdiction of the West Virginia Department of Highways. I reached out to them as well. Dear Mr. Manier, thank you for sharing your concern. Scott Myers, Montague County Maintenance Administrator, reviewed your request and advised that the Division of Highways is currently in snow removal and ice control S R I C. Seasoned temporary patching will be performed as weather permits. More permanent patching will be addressed in accordance with something I don't understand, the 2025 Core Maintenance CMP. Love acronyms. I am not a person of law, but I know the city Morgantown has access to resources that can solve these problems on state roads. The city has vehicles and labor. The city council might have contacts at the Morgantown Utility Board, for another example, that have hardware and workforce to provide the temporary repair. Let's go back to the president. Some of the orders he signed have been stalled in the courts until they're determined if they're constitutional. Other orders, however, are not being contested at all. Is that my time?
That's your time, but why don't you give it a, give it a little wrap-up here?
Okay. So basically, the rest of it is that every time somebody hits a pothole, it takes money out of our pockets. It takes money out of your pocket because we can't afford to pay more. Can we create an ordinance? Can we start a fund? Can you allow us to start a fund? Go fund me. Domino's did potholes in Parkersburg. No joke. I mean, is there a private business? From what I have learned so far, the city Morgantown has no control, no jurisdiction, and no contingency plan to help if the state can't. Can you please help us? Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Adam Manier.
Adam Manier. Do you need to email address? I'll take it.
You would like to speak?
Let's go, you know the, you know the drill.
Sorry that there just wasn't.
Well, my name's supposed to be on the top line anyway, so I don't have to write on it, but that's okay.
You'll have to get used to it.
Yes. Boards and Commissions. I'm sure you're all happy to hear about this tomorrow. It's my understanding that, when I started, that members of boards and commission were not allowed to give interviews or make public statements on behalf of the city or the board of commission without running past communications first. And so I have never spoken to anybody publicly. I have a lot to say under my breath, a lot to say off the side, but I do not go to the newspaper and discuss things with them. When I started, I was told I had to take training to be a commissioner, and it was offered once since I began in December '22. I believe that was in March of '23 that it was done. I'll not comment on its quality. But I don't believe it's happened since then. And there are a lot of people who join boards and commissions who don't know about these rules, have no idea. And so it's easy to get mad. And so it's easily demanded, people who are making statements out of school. But if they haven't had the training, get temper that anger a little bit. And that said, you're out of line, you're out of line. And perhaps it's easy to forget that people who are on boards and commissions are serving at the pleasure council, for the council, for T. Morgantown. And I understand that rocking the boat a little bit to get city council to do something or get city manager to do something, it's always fun to do, but it doesn't need to be disruptive, I mean, and it never needs to be a personal attack, and it never needs to get that ugly, in my experience. I don't think I've gotten too ugly with anybody. No big responses, great. I haven't. I try to be friendly. A little demanding. But back to the Human Rights Commission. I sent out an email today explaining that the Human Rights Commission has voted, decided to bring on Ms. Mimi Ferguson, the West Virginia University Student Government Association Representative, to be a liaison to the Human Rights Commission. We took our vote, we decided we're going to do that. Our bylaws indicate that we're allowed to do that unless city council objects. And so I asked if anyone objects. I got two replies, and so far, no objections. But I would ask that she be given a barking permit because she comes to city council meetings, and she comes to the Human Rights Commission meetings, which is more than can be said of a lot of people. So, both Mimi and thank you, city council, for not objecting to us having a new liaison. Unless you do, in which case you can discuss it when I get done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mimi.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? No, I didn't. He's in the next room. All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. I'm gonna close this one. And now we're on to our planning services. Items for discussion. An ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the seventh ward of the city of Morgantown, tax district 15, tax map six, parcel 76.2, from an O-1 office in industrial district, institutional pardon, main district, to a B-2 service business district, and a portion of parcels, real estate in the seventh ward of the city of Morgantown, tax district 15, tax map six, parcels 74 and 76.4, from an R-1 single-family residential district, and O-1 office in institutional district respectively, to a B-2 service business district, and a portion of parcel of real estate in the seventh ward of the city of Morgantown, tax district 15, tax map six, parcel 74, from an R-1 single-family residential district, to an O-1 office in institutional district. Amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the city of Morgantown, as shown in the exhibit heretofore attached and declared to be part of this ordinance as if the same were set forth herein.
I'm sorry, can you read, can you read that again?
Evening, Deputy Mayor.
I could. I did my best.
You did great, so I appreciate that. And thank you all for your time in this session and all that you do. Earlier this month, the Morgantown Planning Commission reviewed three applications prepared by WVU Hospitals, Inc., to facilitate the development of the new I Institute and parking garage facility along Van Boris Road. They included a minor subdivision application to consolidate property recently acquired for the project, as well as a zoning map amendment and Type III Development of Significant Impact Site Plan. While upon review, the planning commission approved each of the applications, the ordinance, the ordinance before you this evening would rezone two new parcels of land to a B-2 service business district. In your packet, the city clerk should include a revised exhibit that clearly shows the two parcels to be rezoned, as well as the existing underlying zoning designations for reference. The parcel of land to the north of the new access drive for the fire station here is approximately one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-four square feet, and has two different zoning designations, R-1 and O-I. And the parcel of land to the south of the new access drive where the I Institute will be here, shown here, is currently zoned O-I and B-2. The applicant's request is to zone both these parcels to B-2 to facilitate the development already discussed. Please further note that the parcel of land owned by the Morgantown Building Commission, which is kind of showed generally in this area here, will not be rezoned and will remain O-I as it is right now. In keeping with the planning commission's recommendation, staff requests that the ordinance be moved to the city council's next regular meeting for consideration on this reading.
Are there any questions? Would anyone like to move this to the next agenda?
Yes, please.
Certainly.
Sounds good.
Good job.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience through this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you for what you do.
I tried to get him to let you go first.
You're fine. Thank you. Have a good night.
All right.
Thanks, Rick.
Now, we are looking at a potential executive session, and it will be extremely brief, except for that, the jinx is that I know. Anyway, discussion of matters. Is there someone willing to, here?
Can I?
I move that pursuant to West Virginia State Code, Section 6-9A, 4B12, we enter executive session to discuss matters protected by attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's exciting.
Yeah.